Well, good evening and welcome to the Salem City Council Work Session on its strategic plan for November 16. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Ward one, Guest Counselor Stapleton.
Here.
Ward two, Counselor Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Guest Counselor Phillips, Ward three.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis. Counselor Lewis is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Here. Thank you. Counselor Nordike, could you leave it us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd be honored.
Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Hoy, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we do not.
Okay, very good. Do note you have some written testimony that I believe everyone got. Very good. And why don't we go ahead and move into this? Courtney, are you going to lead us on this?
Yes, I will. Thank you. I would also just like to notice that Jim Lewis, Counselor Jim Lewis, has just joined us as well.
Right.
So tonight, what we're planning to do is really devote the time for your conversation about the upcoming three to five years and how we might have some strategic direction for marshaling the city's resources towards outcomes that you want us to work on. So what we're doing tonight is we'll have Moss Adams, the team from Moss Adams is going to be our guide for this conversation. Colleen Rizilis will probably lead us off and share some findings that they're learning as they're exploring input that we're getting from the community. Annie Rose Favreau will also be participating, and Mark Starink, all three from the Moss Adams team, and we're grateful for their time tonight in guidance. We're going to update on what we're hearing and what they're learning as they're speaking with everyone. And we're going to get an opportunity to really consider the next three to five years. That's going to be the bulk of our conversation, just priorities for the next three to five years. So with that, Colleen, would you lead us off, please?
Great. Thanks, Courtney, and hi, everyone. It's great to see you all again. I, we have a little bit of a presentation to share with you tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and share my PowerPoint. So like Courtney said, we'll be going through priorities today as well as we're going to cover a little bit of kind of the foundational elements of the plan, mission, vision, values, and talk to you about where we are in the process and what we've learned so far. So I will get started and just talk a little bit. I think you saw this when I gave my spiel way back in September, which feels a little bit like a million years ago. What we're doing is we're really building on the plan that you started out with in 2017. Our goal is to look at this plan within the context of a lot of the other public outreach and work that's being done in the city right now. We're trying to be pretty flexible and lean with the goal of adopting the plan in February. So you all participated in one-on-one interviews with us. That was a great part of our data gathering process, and thank you for making time for us. We've also had focus groups with every department's leadership team, and we've had a number of work sessions with management. We've also put out a couple of surveys, one to the community, one to staff, to get feedback on priorities as well as some of our goal areas. And we're here developing our priority areas with you in November. As we move forward, we'll be coming back to you with a draft strategic plan in January, and we'll go back out to the community for full input with our goal of finalizing in February. Before I move on, does anyone have any questions about our process? Okay, I'm going to take that silence as a no. All right, so very quickly, I'm just going to go over the foundational elements of the plan, our mission, vision, values. And these are really, they're very strong from your last plan. Really, the focus of this is to think about who we are, what our job is as city government, and where we're going for the future. So I'm going to start kind of least suggested change to most suggested change. Our mission statement is, you know, how are we working toward our vision? What is our role as a local government in the community? This is your current mission, so we provide fiscally sustainable and quality services, whoop, to enrich the lives of present and future residents, the quality of our environment and neighborhoods, and the vitality of our economy. Our recommendation is not to change the mission statement at this time. And so I think we're probably, unless there's any input from this group that feels very strongly about changing the mission statement, we'll probably leave it as is. So any thoughts on the current mission, any potential changes to where we are right now?
I'm a, I'm an advocate for leaving it. Just Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. Okay, I again interpret that silence as agreement, so we'll move on. So next up, we have your vision statement. Our vision statement is, you know, usually unlikely to change, and it's really thinking about, you know, what are we kind of 10 to 20 years in the future? What are we working toward as a community? So we received some feedback in the surveys that we conducted on the current vision statement as well as in conversations with you and, and with staff. So our current vision statement is safe and livable capital city with a sustainable economy and environment that is open to all. This is a pretty good vision statement. The feedback that we got pretty strongly was, what does environment mean in the case of this vision statement? Does it apply to the natural environment? Is it the environment around us? Is it broad? Is it narrow? We also heard, don't make this vision statement any longer. We heard really strongly from you through a one-on-one interview is a desire to create more community connection and to center the community a little bit more in our statements and in the strategic plan. In the survey, we asked the question, when you think about the city in the future, what are the words that come to mind? And so this word cloud really reflects that. So we get a lot of community words as well here. We've got friendly and family and diverse and small and safe here. So our recommendation is to change the word environment with the word community, really reflecting the feedback that we've gotten kind of across the board. And we'd love your input in terms of making that change, or if we wanted to include the word environment somewhere else in the vision statement, we absolutely can. Chris, I see you unmuted yourself, so go right ahead.
Oh, thank you. I like the change, however, I want to also keep the, keep environment in there somewhere, maybe on the line above or somewhere. But I, I like the addition of community, but I think we need to keep environment.
Colleen, I agree with Chris, and I was going to suggest that, especially in terms of the climate action plan and everything else. I can see how environment is, can be interpreted many, many ways, and it's good to say community. So, you know, I'll let you wordsmith it, but it could be sustainable economy and a vibrant environment and community or something like that. But I think it ought to be economy, environment, community, and some iteration of that.
I had a quick question. On the word cloud that you had, this is Counselor, Guest Counselor Stapleton.
Yeah.
And the different sizes of the, of the words, I'm just wondering, was that the voting, like, as far as popularity? Like, the bigger the word, the more people voted for that or mentioned that?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that. And then what I would say about that is, should we have the economy come before the community aspect? Or should the community aspect be first and foremost with the economy following up? That would be my one little bit of input.
Sure. So putting community first in the vision statement because that really reflects the community's input in terms of thinking about the future. Yep.
Sorry, a little bit of memory of the negotiation to get to that language was that when we said sustainable, that was, wow, there was kind of a compromise. Let's put economy and ecology or environment together so that that word is kind of paired between them. And so I think changing the environment to community changes that compromise. So it's, I, I agree that we still need to keep that in mind, that environment part in mind.
Thank you for that.
Could you move forward a slide so that we could see the statement again? Thank you so much.
So with these changes, did we modify it? So now it starts with, with a vibrant community and sustainable economy, just so I'm understanding what changes we just made.
It definitely could say that, yeah. We don't, nothing needs to be set in stone. We're really here to just get your input, and then we can come back to you with some revised language as well.
Guest Counselor Phillips, here, I would add environment back to it. I don't have a strong particular on the phraseology, but it, this is, I think, an improvement if we add environment back to it.
Got it.
Guest Counselor Stapleton here. Should we say or make it very clear that the environment that we mentioned is the natural environment? Because I think there was that kind of question too. What, what are you referring to as far as environment? Am I correct in my understanding of that?
Yeah, so the feedback that we got was that there were just a lot of questions about what environment meant. I think if we are able to separate out community, that might provide us with a little bit more clarity there. But what we can do is, I mean, we can certainly add natural environment. We can think about some, some other ways to refer to it so that we can add that clarity, definitely. Okay.
Colleen, one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just in general, it seems to me that the vision ought to be as broad as possible, so we can fit more things under it. So I'm not uncomfortable with saying environment means natural environment, envi, you know, the ambiance of the city, you know, the, the broader terms of environment. I wouldn't mind narrowing it down. I really, I'm glad we add in community, but to me, I'm happy just leaving environment larger and more, more inclusive of things than narrower.
Yeah, and that's very common in a vision statement, to be very broad and for everyone to be able to see themselves in the vision statement. So what we can do is we can come back to you with some proposed language that adds environment back and maybe move some things around a little bit and see what you all think of it.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's interesting too that we're basically going back to the sort of, well, in my, the iron triangle of people and economy and environment are the three things that are the things that make up our world, right? And so we're basically mentioning all three, taking all the boxes, so.
All right, anyone we haven't heard from that wants to add anything about vision here? Okay, I'm going to move on to values. So values is where we're probably going to end up with the most change, maybe not tonight, but by the time we get to the end of the plan. I think that this really reflects a lot of change in terms of how lots of organizations are thinking about values, value statements, and wanting to get out and kind of talk about who we are and the community that we serve as well, really thinking about the standards of behavior that we truly reflect the expectations of our community as a government entity, how we behave toward each other as well as how we behave toward the community. So we've currently got four values. They're opportunity, compassion, responsiveness, and accessibility. We did some workshopping with the leadership team to brainstorm on some potential additional values. And here's what we came up with. So we've got kind of four buckets, and they are community focused. So thinking about how we can be responsive, how we can work in partnership with the community, and really provide customer and community focused services. So putting those who were serving at the core of our work. Second is accountable. This is about really being professional, government professionals, right? And we do our jobs ethically. We are fair and we're transparent in terms of our work. Let's say both community focused and accountable reflect a lot of work that's happening at the leadership right, team right now in terms of putting performance measures into place, thinking about putting together, you know, a more customer-centric public service center, thinking about really how we, how we serve the citizens as fair, as transparently, and really with them at the core of our work. We also came up with proactive, thinking about making data-driven decisions, going, trying to go less with our guts and really more grounding our work in data and evidence, thinking about trying to be as forward-thinking and innovative, leveraging technology, improving our processes, trying to be one step ahead. And then finally, inclusive. So that was something that was really missing from the last statement was a statement that was very strongly about inclusion and diversity as an organization. These statements in particular, I want to say, you know, we, in Salem, you compete for government employees probably more than your average local government because we've got state and county government as well in Salem. And so thinking about distinguishing yourself as an employer of choice, really demonstrating and then living by your values is going to be really important to you going forward and competing for the workforce of the future. And so this statement is really important. And so we talked about what inclusion really means, creating a safe workplace for everyone, being an accessible workplace, being accessible to the public as well. So really being open for everyone to interact with government and to be served in an equitable manner. Anti-racism as an organization came up, and really thinking about inclusion in a very broad way. So with respect to your value statements, we know that next month you're going to be doing some DEI work. And what we'd like to do is kind of put a pause on values until you've done that work. Because we imagine that as an organization, you're all going to come together with some common language around who we are, how we want to operate together. And we'd love to take the feedback from that and incorporate those in the values. And Tom, I see you've got your hand up.
Yeah, DEI, that's not an acronym I know.
Sure, diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Got it. Okay, now I know it.
Sure.
Thanks.
So in the meantime, though, we'd love your reflection just in terms of the values that the leadership team came up with, kind of immediate responses to these values, whether you feel like there's anything missing from these statements. As those charged with governance, it's important that these values also resonate with you and you're able to articulate them. So any questions or thoughts about these?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, these are in addition to the other ones or to replace the other ones?
We would likely replace them or try to get, we would try to incorporate the existing values into these new value statements. There is some overlap.
Can you go back a screen just so to?
Yes.
Please. Thank you. I'm very comfortable with the suggestions. I think they're good.
I'd like to see them in the final form, but I, I'm comfortable as well, and that was my question. Are we adding to or are we replacing? And my guess is, even if we replace them, we're trying to articulate in a slightly different way the current values that we have.
Yeah, I would say we're adding a little bit and maybe just refining the statements.
I guess my only thought is on the, 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 the lead word of proactive. I like everything under it, but I, I don't know. I feel like, I, I still like words like opportunity better than proactive for data-driven and whatever. I, I don't know. Or something else in there. That's my only thought, really, is that I like the three words under it, but I don't like the top word as much.
Got it. Thank you.
My thoughts, my thoughts are, it would be helpful to see them side by side. But I mean, I, as a general rule, I tend to prefer the screen in front of me because it's more specific. You know, I, it's not, to me, I like having values that are specific. Being data-driven is specific. Being anti-racist is specific. Things like that, take it out of the nebulous territory and into something that feels more specific that we need to, as government officials, as elected officials, need to hold ourselves accountable to. And makes it easier for people to call us on too, if they don't feel that we're living up to it. I feel like it almost sets a higher bar in a good way. I'm sorry, I think I interrupted anyone. My apologies.
No, I just, this Jim Ward eight, I just comment on, on, under inclusive, and it's not, not the subject itself, but the word anti. If, my feeling is if we're an inclusive society, of course, we're anti-racist. We're anti a lot of things. But I just, it, it's a positive environment, but yet it's a, it comes out to be a negative. And I just, I don't know if it's necessary to point it out.
Counselor Anderson here. I, I can certainly see Jim's point with the anti-language. Perhaps that can be expressed in some other way rather than anti in a, in a positive way. Because I think in light of what's been going on in our city in the past four or five months, it needs to, something needs to be in there, but I agree, anti-racist. You know, we're not just against racism, we're for, I don't know, welcoming all, you know, people of all classes, ethnicities, you know, however you want to say it.
I think that anti-racist is not a negative. It's actually a thing that's a positive. What it means is to affirmatively work against racism. So it doesn't mean to be against racism. It means to be actually taking action against racism. And so it's a, I, I, if it didn't have that meaning, I would agree with Jim's sentiment. But I think that it actually is an affirmative statement, not a negative.
Well, I think that's good, Chris, so why don't we say just what you said, affirmatively working against racism or something in that language? Whatever the language you just said off the top of your head seems pretty appropriate for that.
Well, I would say we're talking about doing DI, DEI work next, and having just gone to the DEI conference at the state in the last few weeks, this is actually a term of art now. Anti-racism is actually how they're expressing the work of, instead of just saying, well, there, everything's going to be a level playing field, actually looking at people having multiple extra barriers in front of them and acknowledging that instead of saying, let's make everything level. So I think it's actually a term of art and, and diversity, equity, inclusion work now. So I think I, I don't necessarily want to take that away.
Yeah, I have strongly held opinions on that as well. The state diversity conference is an extraordinary opportunity, by the way. Plug for all the state employees who may be watching at home. But yeah, anti-racism is about not being about passive. It is about taking a proactive approach to recognizing and really unpacking racism as it encounter, as we encounter it in the community in all aspects of life. But I think like Colleen diplomatically mentioned at the start of this discussion, when we start talking about issues like equity and what does anti-racism mean, as opposed to just saying, I'm not going to be racist. There is in fact a whole lot of literature and scientific research around that concept. And I think that's part of why we all unanimously agree to do diversity, equity, and inclusion training is we can learn more about these principles and values. So I would, I think this is a great conversation, but like I, like the Moss Adams folks recommend, let's not put the cart before the horse too much.
I'm being, oh, go ahead, Tom. Thanks. I'm being persuaded by other counselors in terms of anti-racism being a term of art.
And I think that this, oh, sorry, go ahead, Trevor.
Yeah, just, so I agree with the assessment of the people who've gone through the training and Counsel President Hoy's understanding of the words anti-racism. When I see the words, I always think actively anti-racist because it takes action on our part, those of us who have more privilege. So I think it's a good conversation. I, I would like us to keep something very similar to this in the final product.
So this is, this conversation is exactly why we think that when you do that DEI work together and get some, some common grounding as we think about who we are as an organization, I think that will really reflect well in terms of us coming up with these final value statements.
And then just a different topic, going back to proactive. I, I think opportunity is a good word, but I actually like proactive. I, I think some of the things I've heard from the community is that at times as an entity, we may be seen as passive, so I like proactive.
Thank you. All right, any further input on values? I think the only person I didn't hear from was Jackie.
I don't have anything to add. I mean, I think most, most folks address those things, the anti-racist piece, I think, as I'm, as some folks I mentioned earlier should definitely be one of the priorities, especially as we're moving forward with this work.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, with that, we'll get into the really fun stuff. Annie Rose, do you want to take it away and talk about our priorities?
Yeah, absolutely. So thanks for the tee-up. As part of going through this process, as you all know, we need to select some strategic priorities. And so what we wanted to share with you today is some of the feedback that we've been gathering from this team, from the work that we've been doing with the management within the city as well as staff and the feedback that we're hearing from the public. So we're going to share some of those pieces as, as some context and background as we start to discuss, how are we actually going to narrow down to three to five strategic priorities that we want to focus on as a city as a whole? Before we dig into that, I did want to share sort of the framework that we're going to be using within the plan document itself because we already have these really great six strategic goal areas that you see listed here. And these came out of the work of the priority-based budgeting work and a really, really great summary of all of the work that's already happening at the city to support your community in all of the ways that you do. So it's quite encompassing, these six strategic goal areas. And so within the report, our idea is that for each one of these goal areas, we're going to be able to have a summary under welcoming and livable community. Here are all the programs and services that the city offers already that are going in to help support this goal area and to help move us forward in this area. And then in addition to that, we're going to select these three to five strategic priorities. So I just wanted to set that frame for us. We are not abandoning these six goal areas. We think they're fantastic, and we want to build on top of them as we're selecting and moving ahead with the strategic priorities. So if you go to the next slide, we have worked with this team. We've had interviews with this team. We worked with the management team. As I said, we had interviews there, and we've also done several work sessions. We did an all-staff survey, and we've done a public community survey as well. And based on all of those feedback points, we brought together this long list of potential strategic priorities. So as you'll see here, there are 16 on this list. They're all fantastic. They all represent very important work that can be happening at the city. And our job together is going to be figuring out how do we bring this list down and really focus on what we want to put front and center for the next three to five years. So in order to generate this list, as I said, we've worked with these different groups, and we wanted to show you a bit of a side-by-side comparison of how different groups are prioritizing, putting these in order. There's a lot of similarity and overlap, but there are some differences. So if you go to the next slide, there's a lot on this page here, but I'm going to start over on the column on the left-hand side under management. So everything that you see on that top eight list, that's when we were working with the management team and we had that full list of 16. This is the top priorities that they brought that list down to in terms of these top eight. Homelessness response and public safety were really the major topics of conversation in that group. But obviously, you'll see there's a whole list here as well. And then down below under other priorities, that box, those are all topics that we talked about as a group. We feel like important and are critical, but that did not make it into that highest priority ranking. If you move through then to the middle column, this was based on input from this all-staff survey. And you'll see once again, public safety and in this case homelessness response were connected in this survey. And that was the number one priority that we heard from staff. Below that, financial stability and effective government were the next couple down. And then you'll see here, just a point of clarification, the bulleted affordable housing, environment, and climate action, and diversity, equity, and inclusion across services, those were ones that were not part of the original survey that we sent out in terms of something that you could pick off of a list, but that folks commented so frequently on that, that we raised these into that high priority category because because we're hearing so much feedback from staff on those topics. And then finally, all the way on the right-hand side, we have input from the public. And, and we looked at a couple of different sources for this, primarily the community satisfaction survey. And there really, there were quite a few really interesting topics that come up through that survey. But homelessness and homelessness response was one of the real major concerns that members of the public were sharing. And that, I think it was almost 50% of folks who took that survey said that that was their number one concern for the city, as well as some issues around affordable housing and some concerns around how much is the city actually doing in this area? And then we also did a strategic plan public survey and you'll see some of the top ranked priorities there as well, including public safety, quality of life and infrastructure. So again, as you're looking across these, you'll see that there's a huge amount of overlap and alignment between these three groups. And that's a good sign. We, we want to see alignment between what you're hearing from the public and how staff and management are thinking about and responding to those issues. So before we move on to talking about how council has been prioritizing and thinking about these topics, are there any questions here around this information?
Well, I, I have one. I, under public, what seems to be missing is the economic development COVID response. Was that captured somewhere else?
Yeah, so it's actually captured under the public survey under number seven, economic development. It just doesn't have COVID response at the end of it, but it was described in that same way. So we can clarify that.
This is a point that I would make is that my recollection from the community satisfaction survey was that homelessness was their number one priority by a mile. And like, can you, can you recall for us what the precise statistics were for that? Because the reason I want to flag that for my colleagues is that a lot of times people will rank something one, two, three, four, and they'll be very close, right? Like, yes, this is my number one priority, but it's a very close second and a very close third and so on. But what struck me about this survey was that there was not even a close second. Can you share a little more information about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. So, and Courtney may also be able to jump in here if you have more to add. But from my recollection, homelessness was ranked as the number one concern by around 49%. And the next one down, I believe, was crime and drug prevention, and that was at 6%. So you can see the gap there and basically everything else was 6% or less after homelessness response. So yes, absolutely. That was by far and away the top priority that came out of that.
Did you in your discussions find that the affordable housing played together with homelessness? I mean, is that kind of a dash affordable housing or would it work that way? I mean, homelessness is by far number one. I don't know how we could dispute that one, but could we, would it make sense to include affordable housing with it?
What's interesting about both of those topics, when they came up in conversation that you don't see reflected here, is that I think folks were thinking about both homelessness response and affordable housing in a couple of different ways. So for something like homelessness response, we talked quite a bit within the management team around, do we actually have to divide this into daily issues around how do we respond to folks out in the community? To safety issues, to all of those things? How are we actively caring for folks in distress? A lot of issues around that. And then there's all of the homelessness prevention efforts that might go into this. And in the prevention and the upstream side of things, that's where you're really finding it has that overlap with affordable housing. Because you want to have housing options available for people. Within affordable housing though, as well, we talked quite a bit about how there's some of those issues, making sure that there's enough housing for low-income folks, but also just ensuring that there's enough housing across the board in an affordable way and having housing stock. So I think both of those issues, we could really easily split out and have more conversation around.
I actually had a similar question to Mayor Bennett. I, I think it was from the survey from the year before where homelessness and affordable housing were basically put on equal footing. So I, I kind of got the impression that it's no longer exactly the same and people are more talking about homelessness itself. And then they talk about it, like you said, as a preventative issue. So is, is that correct? Is that what I'm, I'm hearing from you as well, as your impression from this?
That's my impression as well. Yeah, that there's a lot of focus on how do we really address that direct immediate homelessness response? And then separate to that and secondary to that, some of these other issues.
What did the discussion around public safety sound like? What are the, what's at the heart of all that?
Yeah, and this is another one where sometimes when people said and prioritize public safety, what they actually meant was homelessness response. And so this is another one where we have to sort of tease that apart. I would say the two themes that we heard were around homelessness response and, and what is the role of different public safety groups in that? What is the role of different groups within the city in that work? And then there's separate to that, a whole other conversation around, how do we ensure that the public safety groups have adequate staffing and resources that they need to do to do their job?
On the infrastructure, was that focused on water primarily? Or where was that focused as they discussed infrastructure?
Yeah, a lot of things have come up under infrastructure. So I would say if that becomes one of the real key factors for this, we're going to want to reach out to the work that's happening around the our Salem comprehensive plan and get some more input specifically there. Things that we did here called out under infrastructure had to do some around bike and pedestrian safety, some around the idea of additional bridges or other, other transit issues related to that. And some of that just had to do, sometimes people use that also to talk about parks and other just city infrastructure that contributes to the feeling of being within the city itself.
Nothing about potholes or any of that kind of stuff. That's all.
There's always potholes, but I wouldn't say that had come up as a major topic.
Good. Or water, or wastewater, or waste removal. None of that showed up.
So far, that was not a major topic of conversation. But again, I would say if we were to pick on that one, we'd want to dig into that a little bit more just because infrastructure does cover such a broad range.
How about traffic under street, sort of streets and traffic? Were there a lot of concerns about inadequate? Or do they leave us some room for bikes and pedestrians? More room there?
I, I will have to go back and look specifically at some of the public responses. Off the top of my head, my memory of that was that there are concerns around traffic and issues there, but that those were not the very top of mind concerns.
Okay, okay, great.
Great. Any other thoughts or questions on this information?
I mean, I, this is the guest counselor Phillips again. I, again, I, I had a similar question as to Mayor Bennett. It feels like from a year ago, not this recent community satisfaction survey, but the year before, the bridge and traffic were like number two at eight or nine percent and that there's been a bit of a shift. So I mean, I, I'm not sure how much you want to hear from us, but like the community members that I'm hearing from, when they think of infrastructure, it's more focused on safety, roads that are safe, safe for crosswalk for kids and bicycles.
And Courtney, you may also be able to speak to this a little bit more. But in terms of the timing of this year's community survey, that may also play into this because we're in the middle of COVID response. The world looks very different than it did a year ago. And that may also be having impacts on things like traffic, how often people are in their cars or out and about. So I imagine, we can't exactly pinpoint what the difference might be, but I can imagine that there might be some changes that we're seeing in that community survey, given the timing of this year.
Yes, Annie Rose, I would concur. There, there was quite a bit of feedback that shifted in the last year. I, yes, Counselor-elect Phillips, that is true. The additional bridge question slipped down to 4% interest when asked what the most important issue is in the community. And so yes, there is definitely, this was done first weekend in September. Memory serves, we had to stop during some of the emerging issues with the canyon wildfires and out of respect for folks who were dealing with a lot of other issues. So it was a really extraordinary year to be making this kind of inquiry. And so when John Horvick was visiting from D H M, he did give us that context that similar to how other communities are faring in terms of response.
What, what does e-government, sorry?
If I could, I might add. One significant difference between this year and last year was there was a high interest, in my opinion, in the Salem River Crossing. And the decision by the council took that away. And I think people have given up on that. That's the reduction in the comments on transportation.
What does e-government entail? What's that mean exactly?
Great question. So we were defining, yeah, basically. We were defining e-government as ensuring to the degree that we can that government services are available online. So recognizing that we're going to want to potentially retain some of the services that are currently being offered online via Zoom, via Microsoft Teams or what have you, but also being thoughtful as we move into the future of, of are there other things that we could move online to make them more accessible for folks?
We don't seem to see stuff like this unless it's under effective government and public trust on the public side. It's more staff and management oriented. I mean, seeing e-government specifically, but is that kind of stuff really included in four and five under the public side or?
Yeah, so as part of our, we did include definitions with each one of these before we had people rank them. And for example, with ineffective government, the definition there is really about how are we doing our own organizational development work to ensure that the city is functioning as effectively as possible? And so e-government services could easily be part of that as part of process improvement work and improving our services.
It's interesting that staff move, that's up third on their list. Is it, is it a call for more training or what is that?
Yeah, a lot of what came up under effective government feedback from staff had to do with how can we improve our processes to make them as efficient as possible, knowing that we're not going to be significantly increasing our staff levels anytime soon? And so how can we be thoughtful about that? I know that was a big piece of it. Some of that had to do with e-government services and, and how can we, you know, really meet the changing demands that are coming because of COVID? And some of that also just has to do with work environment. Right now, everyone's very stressed. We're all living through some pretty stressful times. And so figuring out how can we support each other as colleagues and really work together as a team to move forward, knowing that we're all in this environment?
So what are you asking of us now? What are we supposed to do?
Yeah, so I'm going to take us then through to our next slide, which is my ask for you. If we could go back?
Yep.
Perfect. And then I will give you an ask. Please go ahead, Jackie.
So my question had to do with the public trust. What is that? Like, did they give examples of what that meant? And the second question I had, I just lost it, but I'll try to think what it was.
So public trust, the comments that we got here were mostly around how, how are you guys being transparent with me? How are you communicating to me as a resident? How am I in making sure that services are being provided fairly and transparently? So I would say that there, we didn't actually get a lot of specifics there, but folks did definitely reference, you know, trying to increase communication, increase transparency. And some of that might be about sharing back data with the community so that they can more clearly see, okay, we're making progress in these areas. And some of that is also going to be just clarifying how processes work. Something like a development process can be very complicated and confusing from the outside. So the more that we can increase transparency and clarity around some of those city processes, you know, that that also came up as part of public trust. Did you remember your second question, Jackie? Shall we keep moving?
We can keep moving. If I remember, I'll just ping you about it later.
Great, please jump in. Okay. So in preparation for this meeting, we sent out a short survey to get a little bit more input from you all on what might our shortened priority list look like? And not all of you were able to take the survey. So this, none of this is set in stone, no decisions are being made tonight. But based on those of you who were able to take the survey, we have this shared priority list, these top five here. And so these were priorities that multiple people put and voted for as one of their top five priorities. And they're put in order rank. And then the other priorities that are listed here are other pieces that came up that did not receive necessarily multiple or many votes, but came up at least once as someone's top priority for the potential short priority list. And what's really interesting about this list is with the exception of e-government and great neighborhoods, everything else on this list is a direct mirror of the management team's list and top eight priorities from the management team. So I think that's really interesting and again, good to show that there is alignment there. But we wanted to take this time, knowing that you didn't all get the opportunity to take that survey and spend some time on this slide saying, okay, if these were your top five priorities, how does that feel to this group? Are there edits or changes you would want to see made? So I want to start us off with that first question.
So my initial reaction is I like the shared priorities. Those look good to me. The one comment that I would make is about the role of diversity, equity and inclusion as a individual priority. When what I think of DEI, I think of it as more of an overarching philosophy that infuses all of those priorities. Like our homelessness response has to take into account how marginalized communities are particularly impacted. Or COVID-19 response, we've seen reports from around the country of how black and brown Americans are disproportionately impacted by COVID. So my suggestion for my colleagues is that I wouldn't necessarily think of DEI as a separate priority, but more as a philosophy that should infuse all of our priorities. That's my thought.
I agree completely with Counselor Nordike. I think it's more of a how we do business, not what we do. And I agree with the top five shared priorities. But the, yeah, the, the diversity, equity and inclusion is really our approach to, to doing business, not, not a separate endeavor, I would say.
I in general agree with the top five too. I, I might change the order a bit, but I'm sure that's what we'll be getting to later. And I also look and think that both of the other priorities, both infrastructure and public safety in some ways fit under some of the shared priorities. I think public safety fits under homelessness response. And I think infrastructure fits under environmental, these are those, those aspects. So I think those can be subsumed by some of the shared priorities.
Great, thanks, Tom.
I am a little concerned. I, not enough to change this or, or I liked what Tom had to say, but is not somehow saying something about great neighborhoods, particularly when we're in the midst of putting together our, our Salem plan. I think the neighborhoods can be real sensitive to how we feel about them. And it may be an opportunity to really take a very good look at what our neighborhood program looks like. It's, it's a tremendous part of our comprehensive planning process. And I think for each of us listening posts out in the community that are really, really helpful to have. I, I hear people say the community says an awful lot and I realize they have no idea what the community says because we don't have a newspaper that speaks broadly or, you know, things like that. And the neighborhood groups tend to be at least one place where you can tease out information as a, as an elected official. So I am a little concerned about it, although I, we can prioritize them in the budget or some, somewhere else. Kind of concerned about it getting lost.
Great. Thank you.
I guess I'm gonna just maybe contradict some of the comments, but is that I feel like if we were in a place where DEI was a standard, a norm that everybody already did, I get that, like, kind of like data-driven. I feel like we've gotten to a point where being data-driven is pretty much expected from a government entity. But But the D E I, I feel like is something we need to prioritize because we're not doing it well, in my opinion. And so that's why I feel like it actually needs to be a priority to say, we're, we're not just going to put that on the back burner of hopefully we'll do that all the time. We're, we're gonna actually say, we need to look at this as a, a place we need to improve.
Just to clarify, I wasn't suggesting it be on any sort of back burner. I was suggesting that it overshadow, over, it's like an umbrella over all of our work, not on any sort of back burner.
And hopefully data-driven the same way. I would disagree with you, uh, Counselor Osek. I don't think data plays that bigger role in some of the decisions that I hear being proposed and uh that we're working toward. I don't think data always is considered as much as our hearts are considered. I hate to lose that one.
Okay. Any other?
Isn't on there, so we're not losing anything. I was just using it from a previous example of something that's very important to me. Data-driven is very important to me, but I feel like it's been uh pretty much drilled into people by now. Uh, in my, in my opinion, in my experience, that people expect you to be data-driven. And if we want to elevate that, I'm fine with that. If you want to elevate that as well, we can elevate that. But uh, the D E I thing is something that I feel like is not getting enough attention.
I, I think because those are under values, I think they probably are much like uh counselors Nordike and Hoey are talking about them. They're sort of intrinsic to our activities. If we're accepting those as uh kind of underlying uh ways of doing business, hopefully they will play that role rather than call them out as this kind of priority. I don't know. I, I really don't. I, I hate to lose any of that stuff, so I'm kind of with you on this.
Um, I have to echo Counselor Osek's concerns specifically about the D E I. It doesn't seem like it's being elevated enough. I mean, I understand it's still in there, but I'm, and how it's supposed to be within the work we do, but I think we really need to make sure it's visible and that we don't forget where exactly we are coming from when it comes to this kind of work.
Right, because if it was in the top five, like everyone has said, if we're prioritizing from the top five, that's fine. But if, if we're like looking at those lower box there, I want to make sure that one gets up there, is my opinion, so.
Thank you for that. And it sounds like we're almost talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion work in a couple different ways. One is what is the value that we are bringing into our work on a regular basis as individuals who are part of this organization? Another piece of it is how are we including an equity lens in our services and in things like providing affordable housing and doing economic development? And another might also be about how are we building capacity within our organization to enable us to bring an equity lens into some of this work? Because that is a whole other, you know, set of information and learning um that, that may need to happen. So that might be one that we want to dig into a little bit more and really think through what is the intent behind that one and how might we capture that in different ways across the document?
Yeah.
So just a quick question, uh, guest Counselor Phillips again. Um, so like, are the question before us, could I, could it, is it accurate to paraphrase it as if we like the top five and don't make any changes, that then in the document that becomes the new updated strategic plan, the other priorities won't be mentioned? Or will the, I guess the question is, will the other priorities in some way be mentioned if we agree that the top five are the top five?
That's a great question. And so what I'd like to focus this group on is saying, let's pick a top five that we are really going to focus on and think about and move forward with. Or, or maybe that's a top five plus some other, you know, a foundational piece or something like that. But we do want to get down to a list of three to five actual chosen shared priorities. And so I want to give this time and make sure if these were the five that we're choosing with potentially the addition of diversity, equity, and inclusion, would this group feel comfortable with those as five moving forward?
Well, I could see dropping financial stability of the city as a, a prior, in this list as a priority. It's driven by other, other factors uh that'll, that'll pretty much guarantee we're, I, I don't know how you kind of stay, how that would work in a priority. It's sort of just a shared value that we'll, we'll stay within our budget, that we won't do things that are unsustainable, things like that would open up a slot for us to drop something else in. Or since it's what it is, I guess, I, you could also add diversity, equity, and inclusion to number four as well. Just make it a long list of these value statements that we're going to follow. I'm just not sure what the financial stability of the city as a priority, what's that? Kind of what's that mean?
And that's, that brings up a really great point too, is what we'll want to do as our next step here, and I'm hoping we can take some time to do that tonight, is to talk about each one of these priorities and really dig into what is the intent behind each one of these? Because these are just phrases right now, but what, what do we actually mean by homelessness response? What do we mean by financial stability? And so something like financial stability might be a priority if you're going to need to put in extra time, energy, and staff resources to identifying new ways to create financial stability for the city, for example. So that might be one of the ways that that comes up. But your question leads me to think that we might be ready for that. Let's dig in and talk through these a little bit more specifically, so we're on the same page bound. What, what do we actually mean by each one of those? So on that note, um, I'd love to start with homelessness response and take some time as a group to share out sort of how we are envisioning what that actually means. I had mentioned before that the management team sort of saw this in two separate ways, one of which was really focused on that direct daily response actions and, and how are we handling that as a city? And then one that is focused on homelessness prevention. But I'd love to get input from this team around, when you hear that phrase, what do you think is the actual intent of that? How would you define success in that area? How would we know that we had actually reached a point of success around homelessness response?
Well, I'll jump in. And this has been our number one priority for the past couple of years in our strategic plans, or maybe three years, I can't remember. And the re, last year, I advocated it, advocated for it to be our only, our only priority because we hadn't, we hadn't done enough. And so I think that um there's a lot of groundwork that we've laid over the past couple of years in our, in terms of what this means. And uh, we, we have a lot of potential things happening with homeless response, homelessness response, but not a lot of actual things so far. I mean, in terms of uh actual pro, new programs per, and, and things like that. So um, I'm not sure if you're asking like, what are the specific, the specific programs we want to, to start or to fund or, or what you're asking exactly?
Well, and maybe just a broader question of what are the specific outcomes that you're looking for in relation to this?
One, I, I would find as an outcome would be that the public knows what we're already doing. Uh, right now, I think there is a genuine, a lack of understanding of what the city, the Housing Authority, and the Urban Renewal Agency are doing. Uh, and I'm, I'm still watching for a fairly good catalog of those programs. And then like following up on Counselor Hoy's uh comments is a list of those programs that are actually in the works, you know, uh, either, either ours or private. We have such a mixed program here, including our most recent one, which is uh developing a mobile response plan, having the staff do that. I mean, but this stuff is, is on the move. We have, uh, Counselor Hoy represents us on a more regional, there may be things in that group, but it's getting all of that in one place so we can even begin to talk about where the holes are. Uh, I mean, there are, there are obvious holes. There are fifteen hundred unhoused people out there tonight.
And, and the mayor just touched on something I was going to actually say is that I think we need to uh double down on our, our partnerships with our, you know, with, with the Midvalle Valley Housing, Homelessness Alliance and our, the county, the two county governments, the other cities, and really have uh really doubled down on our regional effort to address this issue and, and uh not work so much in the silos of government.
Yeah, we, we just can't do it alone. We, we just can't do it. It's too big. We, we can keep adding thirty-six units here, twenty-five units there, and a parking lot here and a parking lot there and a couple of warming centers, and we've now taken care of two hundred people. You know, we're, and we're still sitting there with thirteen hundred that day unhoused and probably two hundred moving into town. So it's, it's really finding some sort of public satisfaction that we have committed adequate resources uh to addressing the problem. It, it's not a prob, it's not a problem, I don't think. I, I, other counselors may fully disagree with me, but I can't see we will find a solution uh during this council or maybe two or three future councils that will actually house all those folks that are unhoused at this point. Uh, we can house different segments, we can do different kinds of programs, but the number is so large, uh, I'd li, I'd like to have people just understand where we are and where we're going, I think would help a tremendous amount.
Well, I think that's an interesting segue, Mr. Mayor, to um, so you see number one and two are homelessness response versus affordable housing. And what is the distinction there? Because are we talking about homelessness response in terms of, are we going to do preventative measures by creating more housing? Or are we talking about, we're accepting that there's going to be a certain level of homelessness? And how do we treat the folks who are unsheltered? Uh, and so I think there is the, the sort of, the, the dual uh phases of uh in the short term, how do you deal with folks who are unsheltered and their safety as well as others' safety? Um, which I, I think often gets categorized as other's safety less than their safety, which I, I feel is unfortunate that their safety is not as prioritized as it should be. But what I, I think is important to say is if we're not capable as a city of housing everyone, what are we going to do for the folks that we can't house? And uh, until we can get to that point. And I think you're right, and Chris is, uh, sorry, Counselor Hoy is right, that we need partners in order to house everyone. As a city, we, we haven't had the funds to do that by ourselves. So um, we need to address, what are we going to do for the folks that we're not capable of helping as a city by ourselves? Um, and I do think it needs to be broader than um how to respond to crisis, although I think that is a part of it. I think it, it, but that's why I think it needs to be defined as we're talking about crisis management, we're talking about uh safety, we're talking about food uh security for folks who are unfortunately unsheltered um in the city. So um, understanding that the, the affordable housing is a huge priority because it could potentially help solve that problem, but it's probably not going to be solved tomorrow.
Yeah, I, the, the main thing, I think, uh, from what you're saying, Counselor, is I, I really think because we're talking about stuff being data-driven, is getting some real data on everything that's going on so we can see where the holes are. And I agree with you on affordable housing. It offers a, a little bit of help, uh, but it, it takes a long time to get a few houses, a few affordable units built. So it's, I think your, your final question of what do we do to mitigate the horrible outcomes on people's lives of homelessness is going to be one of the huge tests.
Um, I, Mr. Mayor, I see this uh certainly number one and, and leads into number two. I see there's three areas that uh, uh, we ought to focus on, and I, and I'm saying in my priority. The first one is responding to the crisis and, and the needs of the people who are currently homeless in our city. Uh, um, just taking care of their day-to-day stuff as well as we can. And there's lots of, you know, tendrils underneath that. The second one is the housing end. Let's do everything, and that's more a long-term goal, but get these, uh, get folks into housing. And I think the third one, and it's uh at least a lower priority in my mind, I know that it is not necessarily in the, the public's mind. And I think, again, the idea that we can get out what we've been doing is, is respond to the public's concerns about what's going on in our parks, what's going on downtown and that sort of stuff. And, and that's, uh, you know, that is um, a, a lesser priority to me, but it needs to be addressed because this is, when people say they're concerned about homelessness, many of them are concerned about the issues one and two, but many of them are concerned about three. And, you know, the, yeah, the, I'm being kind.
You are.
The worst scenario is, is, and the people who are concerned about homelessness is get them out of our city. And that's just never going to happen. And, 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 but we have to, we have to at least uh, uh, recognize that that's a you know, that's a sentiment in, uh, in parts of our city.
And I think what we're talking about here, what everybody is talking about, just in little bit different terms, we're talking about how much do we want, how much effort and resources do we want to put in managing homelessness? And how many, how much resource and effort do we want to put in ending homelessness? Those are really the two, two separate endeavors. Managing, that's the day-to-day stuff, and then ending, that's more of the housing and the, the long-term programs that get people off the streets.
Genuinely long-term. I think recognizing the long-term and what that means in terms of our ability to really come to a, what would be an agreed-upon resolution, which will never be an end to homelessness. It will just be an agreed-upon resolution to certain, uh, to certain parts of it. I think that's one of the difficulties here.
So I'd like to, I would like to add that, um, you know, since joining council, housing first has been a priority for the city, uh, one that I've talked about many times and one that the city has already begun investing in, which I, which I know we've talked about. We're talking about H R A P, the homeless rental assistance program. We're talking about Redwood and Sequoia Crossings, and these projects really are saving lives. And that's something we have to recall that, you know, it all starts with housing. But then the next phase, of course, is providing those wraparound services. In many cases, the mental health services that have, are woefully absent around the state. Um, there's a lot of literature out there that will tell you that the number of homelessness in your area is directly tied to the affordability of housing and that that really is the number one factor. And I, that's why I appreciate the fact that these two priorities are our two top priorities as proposed on the shortlist. And yes, there is a huge difference between managing homelessness and ending homelessness. I think the, the people of Salem will feel that we have made a difference when homelessness becomes less visible. I think that it rose to the forefront of the conversation because homelessness became visible. And frankly, there were plenty of people who were happy with things and how things were so long as people stayed in the shadows. And that's not an acceptable outcome to me. But if we want customer surveys, satisfaction surveys to change over time, it will be once the visibility of homelessness has reduced, which is not necessarily our top priority. I think doing everything we can to reduce homelessness through the data-driven means of housing first and other priorities is what we need to pursue. And getting people, you know, finding opportunities to triage, to meet with them where they are, to find ways to de-escalate, to find ways to connect them to the incredible breadth of resources that we do have in this city would be extremely helpful. Because, you know, I, having toured probably ten or twelve different community partners uh around the city, everything from Simanca Place, U G M, and so on, we actually have a robust network right now that keeps hundreds, if not thousands, of people off the streets along with Salem Housing Authority, Urban Renewal Agency, and so on. And yes, I agree with the mayor that it makes sense that we identify these so that the public knows what we are currently doing and what is currently working.
Yeah.
But long-term, housing first is certainly the most evidence-based and the most cost-effective approach. I call it the LED light bulb of addressing homelessness. There's an upfront cost, but long-term savings.
Well, one thing I would like to add to what has just been said, which I think I, I mostly agree with everything that's been said, is that if number one and two are about unsheltered folks as our priorities in the city, how is our budget reflecting that? And I think that what we've talked about a little bit is um alone, we can't solve this because of the budgetary issues. But if this is really the number one and number two, like people talk about having multiple, multiple number ones and there's their uh priorities, if we have both of them identified as the number one priority, why aren't we uh making sure our budget reflects that? And I feel like that's one of the things where, yes, it may take a couple of years. If we, even if we reflect in our budget, that this is our number one priority is to get folks off the street, well, the way to do that and to affect public safety, which in the, at least the staff survey was the unsheltered folks were an under thing to, an under bullet to public safety, which was their number one priority. It's, well, we should be making sure our budget aligns and we're spending money and time and effort in every possible way. And actually with 1,500 people, I mean, I, I applaud what the mayor's HRAP program. And what we've done is figured out ways to house hundreds of folks already. If we actually prioritize this budgetarily, number one, for the next four years, I feel like there is a legitimate chance we, I mean, ending at 100% is a tough bar, you know, people will find some way to not make it 100%. But we could actually work on this as the number one priority budgetarily. We could actually work on this and make a big, huge difference and make it down to something where it's not even on our list anymore because it's so small, you know? 1% or two people or something like, that's an attainable goal that I think one of the things that literature has shown in the last 10 years is it went from you're never going to solve this problem to if you actually focus on it, folks want to be housed, which was something that wasn't accepted for a while in literature. It was, you're never going to get there. But we've shown with our HRAP program, the folks who are least likely to want to be housed will accept housing if you work with them in a shared accountable way across partners to get them there. And so I feel like that's why, that's why I think it's important to define these goals is are we talking about a, a short-term management versus a, a even midterm success versus we're going to always manage this forever? And we also want to put some affordable housing out there whenever we can, within our current budget without changing anything, blah, blah, blah. Versus are we going to radically change our budget to focus on our number two and number one priority at the same time?
It's, it's like we're missing a housing category. Affordable housing is quite a bit different than housing for homeless. It's a prevention, I agree, but should we be looking at, well, I don't want to add too much, but just the idea that one of our responses will be build not low-income, it's no-income program-supported housing for, actually for the homeless, that Conestoga or Tiny House model, and how much can we invest in that to make it, make it, make it there?
Not everyone in our HRAP program is no-income though, Mr. Mayor, sorry. But like when I have a property that we're putting up for rent and they went through the program, it, a lot of these folks actually have a small income and they have enough income where they can help pay for their, their housing and so.
Oh yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure they can fit into an affordable housing model.
Exactly. So yes, you're right, that there is a federal definition of affordable housing that not everyone's going to be able to buy into. But if you get it to a point where folks can pay by their means, so to speak, it's actually somewhat achievable. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
I, I know you know that, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanted to.
It, it might make sense to get rid of the word affordable. On housing at all levels, low-income workforce housing, I mean, we need, in order to really solve the housing problem, you need, you need more housing stock at all levels.
Exactly.
And I, I'd just like to add, thank you, everyone who's already spoken on this. I, I feel more compelled now that we could combine one and two. I feel like that's what the community has done, and that's been done organizationally before we got to this point of making these shared priorities. I mean, I do agree with the data that's been cited. That's what I've seen as well. And I've also seen data that supports the idea that when we do provide that housing with supportive services, it has been shown to save money. So I am a big fan of that, and I don't think we can sacrifice that in any way. We need to increase, you know, the commitment to do that. Because my goal, whether it's four years, 10 years, or 20 years, is to end homelessness. But in the short term, there is a crisis that everyone in our community is seeing, not just those of us on the front lines of healthcare or first responders. And it's my opinion that we do have to do more on that. And I don't know if this answer fits to the questions being asked right now, but to me, what a response to homelessness looks like in the setting of this crisis that we have is a mobile response unit, a navigation center with low-barrier shelters or no-barrier shelter, and a sobering center. There will be difficult situations that require additional services that won't be caught up by the things that a navigation center has where they can accommodate some intoxication. And I say this knowing that the war on drugs has failed and Oregon is moving in a different direction to treat this like Portugal did in the healthcare model. So we need these services in our community. And, and I'm here to advocate for them.
The only thing I might add to the conversation, because I agree with the need and everything that's been mentioned, but what is the cost? What, I mean, do we have an estimate of what it would take in two years to accomplish the goal? What, what is the cost? And, and we never hear what that is. My sense is that is such an insurmountable amount that the city cannot provide it. But why aren't we talking about having the community to provide the money? How much would it cost to accomplish what we're talking about?
I just want to second that. That's a great point, is we don't hear enough about the, the goal amount. And when we're budgeting, that could be taken very much into account if we knew that.
Well, and if, just as a reminder, if you'll go back to the very first thing, the very first comment made on this topic, which is the one I made about doubling down on our partnership with the other governments and, and the Mid-Valley Homeless Alliance, which is an alliance of Marion County, Polk County, City of Salem, City of Monmouth, City of Independence, City of Kaiser, and a lot of nonprofits, including Salem Health, and a lot of others. And I think that's really where the key is. And if there is going to be some sort of financial estimate, I mean, it's never, the city's never going to budget the money to solve this problem. It's going to be a community effort. And it's, it's a community response that comes through collaboration, and I think that's really the key.
Well, but to your point, Chris, I think what I'm saying, what I was thinking when Jim was saying that was what is the City of Salem's responsibility in that? What can we, what do we need to ask our partners for? You know, so that we could say, you know, like when the state applies for federal funds, we have to say, what are we willing to give to deserve those federal funds, right? And I feel like that's what we need to tell our partners. Where is the City of Salem going to give this amount to solve this problem? Are you willing to come with the amounts that are needed to make that 100% versus 40%, 10%, whatever. I don't even know what the amounts are, but you know. Here's, here's what it takes as a whole. How much are we each going to give?
I understand. And I'm not facilitating this process, but I feel like we're going down a rabbit hole here that is not really, I mean, we could have a whole, a whole meeting on this topic, and it really isn't necessarily having to do with our strategic plan. It's, I mean, it's very much a very detail within the plan.
It, it'll come at a later date when we actually adopt this as our number one. We will spend hours, days, months, and years in this discussion.
Yes, likely will. But I appreciate hearing this conversation. I think this is really helpful. And my, the biggest takeaway is that I'm getting from this is that there is dedication to making a priority around the immediate management and crisis response that is needed in this current moment, while also building out infrastructure for some of those long-term solutions that are really at, addressed at targeting and ending homelessness within the community, having some balance there. It sounds like partnerships are going to be a major feature of this. It sounds like doing some more information gathering upfront is going to be really critical so that as you're having those conversations, you have the same set of data in front of you and a really good understanding of what are the services we already provide, where are their holes, what are the needs? And what does the data and evidence tell us from other studies and other locations that we might want to bring here and apply here? So those are my sort of big picture takeaways. But within that, I think an important key is that we want to break up those first two shared priorities and get very specific about what we mean by homelessness response and breaking it out in the way that we just talked about. And then on the affordable housing piece, if we drop the word affordable and recognize that there's going to be some housing that will come in as part of homelessness response, and then we can address housing as the sort of broad spectrum of the various housing needs within the city community. It sounds like that would be a better direction to go with that number two item. Does that sound right to this group?
I think having that housing, sorry.
So, after you, Mr. Mayor, I'll go after you.
Okay, well, just having that housing segment broken up into the various types of housing like Counselor Hoy suggested is just so we understand what we're talking about, but that we also have a kind of an understanding of the goals we've set for ourselves in single-family or multifamily and below and the, and the cost of rent.
Great. My, my only thought is I'm okay with that approach so long as, in my view, affordable housing is something in crisis level. I'm not as worried, even though we need housing at every price point, where we need it the most is at the affordable, low-income level to prevent a whole host of other socioeconomic factors, homelessness, you know, kids falling behind in school. We have a thousand students in the Salem Kaiser School District who are homeless last I talked to the school district. So, I mean, I'm totally fine with breaking up with that, you know, breaking it up into all these different components. But I, I really want to make sure that people know where I'm coming from, that affordable housing is where we can prevent people from living on the streets and taking up a whole host of services that it requires. When you live on the streets, all the things that you would do for yourself, you can't because you don't have a roof over your head. So I just am emphatic about that. But this is a great conversation. I look forward. And I, I agree, it's, it is time we move on to our next slides, but I'm excited for more conversations about this topic.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, Counselor, the affordable housing generally on the, in the actual, when you're looking at the definitions, it's actually the second from the bottom. It's not the, it's not the low-income.
It's not the lowest end.
Yeah, low income would be lower than that. And so that's why I think it's good to hear the word affordable because it's really a specific thing. It's a defined thing that is not exactly what we're talking about here.
Okay, I appreciate that. Cause yeah, I mean, to me, when I think of affordable housing, I think of from like zero up to a certain percentage of the poverty line. That's, so it is helpful that we're on the same page. So thank you for the clarification.
I just wanted to add to the affordable housing or however we're going to reframe number two, that we're also taking consideration people who currently even have a home and how are we going to ensure that they don't lose their homes? I think that's also another consideration as well. I mean, considering we do have people who are homeless, people who are unsheltered. We've also got people who are struggling.
Thank you, Jackie. That's a great point. And that also connects through to this.
Thank you. I have one more thing, too.
Great, go ahead.
For environment, I just want clarification. Is this going to be, we're also doing the R-Salem project right now with, through, so is that also going to be taken in consideration in this process is one question? And then the second question relating to environment, does environment also consist of walking neighborhoods and how close a vicinity is to like a grocery store? Bus routes, easy access to public transportation?
That's a great question. I'll answer the second one first. In terms of this priority, climate and the environment and climate action plan are connected to each other because we're thinking of the environment in that more broad sense of the natural environment, the natural ecosystem, and what is the impact of the city on the natural world as demonstrated within the climate action plan. So that one is fairly focused there. I think some of the other things that you're bringing up, like the built environment and how close are you to a grocery store, those types of questions, that is coming up directly through the, all of the work that's already happening around the R-Salem plan. And so that's something that is work that is, that is happening. We know we've prioritized it already. We want to keep that work moving forward. And so we're not seeing that called out, I think, in this top five list, just because that work is already quite advanced in terms of where that is.
I would say that that could be part of great neighborhoods. I think that that was really reflected in some of my conversations with all of you, really about what our neighborhoods look like and creating kind of vibrant communities and sustaining vibrant communities. That said, a lot of things can go underneath this concept of great neighborhoods. We can put infrastructure there. We can put some of this economic development and COVID response as well. And we've seen that as a broader priority area in other strategic plans.
Great. Well, then I think if we have more time, we can continue discussing and defining out some of these shared priorities. Or we can take it from here and move on and we can share around next steps. Where are we with our time? I'll take more time if we have it, so.
I'm voting for next steps.
Excellent. I think that for most of these other pieces, financial stability of the city, I think that one's pretty straightforward. As we talked about with the climate action plan, there's already a lot of work that's happening there. In terms of economic development and COVID-19 response, just so that you guys know sort of where a lot of the comments were coming from on that one was really around, how are we doing job creation? How are we ensuring that folks who are potentially out of work are not slipping through the cracks? What are we doing in response to the economic impacts that COVID-19 is having currently? So I think that most of those are pretty straightforward. So I'm glad that we spent our time on one and two because I think those are going to be the real critical key priorities here. For our next steps to move us forward, the next steps in this process are, we're going to be taking these priorities back. We're going to be reworking them and bringing them back to this group and back to the management group with a proposed saying, okay, if these are your top five priorities, this is what this could look like with some more definitions and some more information around the intent behind each one. So we'll bring that back to this group. Once we have that finalized, then we will work with you and with the management team on developing specific action items underneath each of these specific priorities. And that's where we'll get to get a little bit more into the details of exactly what we want to see happening in relation. How will we know that we're moving forward with this? How will we know that we are actually making progress in that area? And once we have that list finalized, then we'll move forward to the full draft strategic plan for your review. So those are the next pieces coming up. Any questions about those? Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, thanks. This we got, this really is with respect to the action items under each of the general areas, but there were three that I wanted to bring up tonight. One, we've already talked about the climate action plan. The other is the, the letter from Sprab, which I thought had made some very interesting points as to what we want to do with trees and parks and everything else. And those could fit under some of the priorities. And the last one is downtown development. And I'm really talking about housing downtown, not just the economic things that are going on in downtown. And, you know, that fits in under housing and some other areas. But, you know, there's some really potential ideas of what could be happening on the second floor of a lot of the places downtown and some of the big box stores that are no longer, you know, that are empty. And some others could be empty in the future. So I think it'd be good to look at that, too. Thanks.
Great. And that might connect really well to some of the economic development and COVID response work as well, because that ties in directly there. Any other questions or comments? All right. I'm going to take that as a no and that we're feeling good about where we are today. And I'm really looking forward to the, the next steps in this process. And I'll pass this back to Colleen and Courtney.
I think I'm going to give this to Courtney. I think I'm good. So just so everybody knows, we are going to be regrouped in January at a work session. And that's when you'll see all of this great work that we're going to do between here and there. And look forward to regrouping again and talking about the strategic direction. Thanks so much.
When are you looking at this, Courtney? When will this be back to us, this next work session? What are you looking at?
It's, it's January and I want to say it's the 16th, but I feel like I'm distracted. It's, uh, it's January and I want to say it's the 16th, but I feel like I'm distracted by today being the 16th. It might be the 19th, it's, it's the third Monday, but not the Monday because of the MLK Day.
Okay, it's after our new counselors are sworn in.
It's January 19th.
Okay, after our new, yes, okay, just want to make sure. Okay. Well, then, uh, is there anything else for the good of the order? We're adjourned then.